Everybody, it's 7:00 PM. February 21st, regular council meeting in the green room. If we can all stand for the pledge and Dennis will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and item number two, are there any visitors who wish to speak? All right, hearing none, we'll go on to item three, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the February 7th, 2024 minutes?
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number four, we have asked Richard Brown, this is his first day, he is our interim town manager, to introduce himself because we don't know him well enough to do that. So here is Richard Brown.
Thank you, and that's highly unusual for anybody in an appointed administrative position to get applause in a public gathering. So I really ought to just quit now while I'm ahead. I want to thank the council and the community for the warm welcome that I've received since I've been in Clinton and I've been here since about 8:30 this morning. I met with a few of the council members, I met with a number of department heads, I met with some citizens who stopped by, and I can say without any equivocation, this is the most welcoming I have felt in any community that I have been in. So it is really my privilege to be here. Short story is, I have about 45 years of experience in local government, I've been a city manager in a number of communities from Virginia, Rhode Island, Connecticut, and I've been a town administrator in a couple of others. I believe that the process works if we all work together, and it's a combination of staff, elected officials, my office as well as the community. I think public service, public participation is noble, has value, and should be celebrated and not denigrated as it has been so, so often. This first week, I've got a busy few days, and I can't think of a better way to get back into municipal work, so thank you for welcoming me into your community, and I hope when I finish my assignment here, you are still applauding.
Thank you, Richard. Item number five, appointments and reappointments. And first we have Teresa O'Rourke, who is a zoning board of appeals alternate seat until November 2025. Does anyone have any questions for Teresa? Hey Teresa, how are you doing? Does anyone have any questions? No? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to appoint Teresa?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, we have Sue Marcus on an appointment for the Planning and Zoning Commission until November 2025. Does anyone have any questions for Sue Marcus? Hey Sue. All right, hearing none, is there a motion to appoint Sue Marcus?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, the River Cog Regional Agricultural Council, we've heard about this one. I've been, they want somebody to represent us, and I've put feelers out to a couple. I know Brian has put feelers out to a couple. No one has responded positively yet. Is there a pressing date for this, Mary? I know, I saw that they met the third Thursday of the month. And they meet virtually, and I think that we should keep looking, and if we don't, one of us on the council will do that. All right, so we'll put that over until the next meeting. Item number six, presentation on Experience Clinton website, we have Steve Van Ness who is here to present it. Thank you, Steve.
Hi, everybody, I'm Steve Van Ness, I'm president of Clinton Arts Council. I know many of you, I do this as a way to give back to the community. Since 2019, when we started the Clinton Arts Council, when it was Christine, when she was first select woman's sort of vision to have an arts council, and then COVID hit and we kind of stopped a lot, but one of the big projects we wanted to start with was looking at what was the need of the arts in the town and the culture in the town and economic development as part of that. So we did a survey, right as COVID started, to arts organizations and to sort of leaders in the community and lots of people, and said, what's the number one issue? Or, you know, we asked a few questions, and the number one thing that came back is, no one knows what's going on in this town, there's not any one place where we can find everything, what's going on. So I wrote ARPA grant during COVID, which the council supported, and one of the parts of that grant was to create a website. And when the board of the Arts Council got together and said, well, we can create a website that's the Clinton Arts Council website, that has a calendar and has things on it, or we can create a Clinton website that the Arts Council is the sort of arbiter of. And everyone agreed on the latter, that it really should be a town site. So this is really, this is a town asset, it's almost, you consider it in sort of beta in terms of tech terms, because it's got everything there finally, it takes a lot to do this, but now we got to have the community and the leaders of the community to embrace it, which is not a simple thing, and there's a pretty extensive marketing plan that I'll highlight very quickly at the end. So this is the site, Experience Clinton, we spent a bit of time before we even started coming up with the name, and Experience Clinton was the name we came to. The, it has four main components, parts of it, performing arts, visual arts, culinary arts, and spoken word, there's four big categories, which is both poetry and storytelling and other things. And this is sort of the homepage, and I'll just quickly, which not, but I'm actually going to start with culinary areas, because, you know, one of the things that the site is about is not only for all Clintonians to hopefully start to use, go, oh, where do we go to do this, but other shoreline people, like shorelines, the people that live in those shoreline towns, to get used to using the site. Because people come to Clinton because it's got the best lobster roll, because it's got opera, but, and often, there is, you know, there's a dining component. So we've listed every single restaurant in town and a link to every single restaurant on here, so if there's an event in town, that one's got an error, wouldn't you know that that's a mistake, and a hack error, because some people's websites go down. So as you can see, there's, let's see if that one works, so there's Westbrook Lobster, so you can go, so if there's an event happening in town in any, whether it's a cultural art event or otherwise, we want this site and this page to start being used, so people would go there to know, we took all the restaurants in Clinton, they were all in downtown, you know, we'd have a food back there. So I want to just go back, so that's quickly an overview, and one of the other elements that we've determined is that we know from social media that videos are watched 10 times as much as stills on social media, and people love to make videos and to see themselves in videos, so all four of the categories up there have a video component, and each month will be a new video, just quickly, this is the Chow one, the new pizza truck, so that gives you an idea of the kinds of things that will be trying to get people to look at, and each restaurant will get a month while they'll be featured on it. And then quickly, the four categories, performing arts has its own page, and the three, as we call the big three, in town, Kids Connection, the opera company, which uses the theater upstairs, and George Flynn, they all have their own sort of segments here, and they can add things to it. One of the struggles is getting people to actually load themselves, which they can, there's a way to load your events, load pictures on here. We're self-loading analysis, we'll do for a while, but each of them have it, and then there's all the, as well as the high school and middle school, their performances and their musicals that they do, Scottish days, and if there's other organizations like the sort of society, for instance, which Carrie, I know you've mentioned, if they had events, there's a place there, so we can continue to add as many performing arts elements as possible in here, so if people want to find out what's going on. And then visual arts, which there is actually quite a bit of visual arts in the town of Clinton, there is the sort of the three major organizations, the Art Society, which is in this room, and this has information on the society and all that they do, Cindy Stevens and all her arts and education programs, and the Clinton Art Gallery, they each have their own sort of areas and pages that they can add to, that we update with sites as we do it. And then we have a sculpture mile, which has its own link. If you don't know, there are over 20 sculptures over the mile and a half of Main Street, from Westbrook down to the edge of Madison. And so there's all that information there, and it continues to grow, and we add to it. There is a separate sculpture mile page, just because it has quite a bit of depth to it, and there's bios on each of the different sculptors, some of them are Clinton sculptors, some of them are from the shoreline, and that's a constantly growing element that we want to promote in the town. And then spoken word is the fourth one, which is a little less known, we have done, we did a lot of storytelling right before COVID, and then once COVID started, we did it virtually. And we have a poet laureate in the town, as you probably know, so the poet laureate has a space here, and then Jody is another poet in town, and he is the sort of arbiter of finding new poets each month, as each category has its own sort of video person to find new events, find new things that are going on, so this spoken word. And then there's the event calendar, which doesn't, you know, there's not a lot of events going on in Clinton right now, and that's part of what we want people to load, so right now, this is the month of February, it shows the event, it shows the detail of it, you can look in the calendar by month, or you can look at it by listing, and there's a vertical way to do it. So this is really, this is the opera in the summer, so this is really intended to be used for anyone in Clinton that lives here that wants to know what's going on. We did the Santana film upstairs on Saturday night here, it was an Arts Council thing, and one of the people that came to it said, well, I had a really hard time finding anything else about, finding out about it, so I went to the town Clinton site and I couldn't find anything there, so we talked about, one of the, the one action item I really have for the council is that we really need to put a link to this page onto the town website. One of the other things is social media element, you know, there are four or five different social media, especially Facebook, Instagram pages in the town, All Things Clinton, which probably has the most people, the Arts Council has one, and starting to talk about, which we've done with the chamber, of trying to link them all together, so they could all have a place on this site, so the more, and sort of, Ms. Brown, as you said, everybody working together, we really need to work as a team to help promote Clinton, and this is as much economic development as it is the arts and culture, because they really intersect with each other, and one of the missions of the Arts Council is to help in the redevelopment of downtown, and we try to do a lot of things, and that's listed sort of here in this sort of opening mission statement. There is a Arts Council tab, quickly, which just has our mission statement, we do a lot of arts and education programming, these were the murals that we did in the high school at Morgan on social justice issues, where we had muralists come down, and we're doing another one with the library right now on online bullying that we got a grant for. And Clinton creates is really a place where anything that's sort of been created in Clinton, from an art point of view, can be used, and this tab here, you can click on it, and anyone can submit a piece of art to add to the page. So we want to make this inclusive as we start to market it. Those are most of the pages of the site, and it's just starting to really fill up, there's this constant changing, we keep adding to it, this is fireworks from last summer, there's a constant scroll and we add things onto it. One of the biggest challenges though is, we have a staff person now that we have some grant money, Sarah Alletta, who's a college student who keeps this whole thing going, but getting all these organizations to actually take the time to load it and understand how to use the website is hard, so we're planning on loading it ourselves for at least a year while we go through the whole marketing process. So the, quickly, the marketing piece of this is multi-folded, so we have a Experience Clinton QR code with the word Experience Clinton on it, we want to make banners and use the downtown light poles where we could hang banners, where you'd see the Experience Clinton name and brand all the time, because, you know, part of marketing, anything, is the 101 of marketing is you have to see it seven times before people start to really use it and look at it. So if we have a brand downtown of banners that are there, we're talking about doing a direct marketing piece, if not to every home in Clinton, to as many homes as we can, with a postcard about Experience Clinton, use the site, use it to, you know, find a restaurant or to go out, and integrate that in probably with some other kinds of direct mail, and then obviously press, we've had one article already about the site early on, and then when we launched this with the QR code, we're also going to take that QR code and make stickers that would go in the window of pretty, pretty much every business in town, so you can, that QR code will take you to the site no matter where you are, and the site was also designed for your phone, so it works on your phone, looks a little bit different, but it still works on your phone and has all the same functionalities. We'll probably do a little bit of ads in the paper, and then also for the shoreline, there'll be a large social media component, all the different websites that we've done, social media sites like Experience Clinton, all those different social media, Instagram and Facebook pages, we're going to link together, and we'll probably do some boosting in towns besides Clinton, like in Old Sable, in Madison, in those towns where Clinton is a destination town, people come here for Lobster Landing, for an opera, there's a lot of Kids Connection, kids from other towns. So we want, we want other people from those towns to go, oh, what's going on in Clinton? Now we have a place where we can find out what's happening. So we're going to try to do some marketing in social media, we also want to go to the outlets and have these QR codes at the outlets, four million people a year go to the outlets, almost none of them come downtown. How can we get more of those people engaged in at least knowing what's going on, or knowing where the restaurants are in town if they shop and come here? So I think it's all those pieces, so it's social media, QR codes, press, and also a street team, we're going to make the QR code into a business card size, and I'm trying to put together what we call a street team, which is high school kids pretty much, doing, you know, getting credit for doing things in the community, where they'd come to the opera and they come to, and they come to any event that's going on and they hand out these cards to people, so that the Experience Clinton brand is out there as much as possible. So our goal is to sort of implement that whole marketing strategy this spring and into the summer, as also there's more tourism in the area. So that's a quick overview, there's obviously a lot more detail, but I don't want to take too much more time, just, people have questions?
So your ask is that we consider putting the link onto the website?
Yeah, that's the only real ask right now, the other ask is sort of soft, which is, I need you, I need you as leaders, along with, we met with placemakers, we're meeting with them and with the chamber and other leaders to, as we, when we roll this out, to help promote it, and use your social media and help to promote this in ways that you maybe see through the political nature of what you guys all do, to help promote it when we get this going, because it's a town asset, we built it, it was built with, really with town money, with ARPA funds that we got, and now that asset we really need to use. I can't do that myself, the Arts Council can't implement that, I have one staff person that sort of keeps the site going, but we need really to come together, I have written a grant that's, that we'll hear about probably later this spring, that is a pretty large grant, which is just for operational things, we need staff people to work on this and market it and do all that, and that's sort of step two if we get there.
So Steve, the, so you guys would, the Clinton Arts Council would police this or sort of monitor?
Yes, so we police it.
You mentioned, you know, team and all-inclusive, so if, you know, if I'm a poet, say, and I want to be on there, you know, I guess we would try to include everybody.
That's right.
But what if they're a controversial poet, or they're putting something out there that we don't want to necessarily promote as a town or as a town council?
I think that, I think that's a great, hard question, which is, there's also the point of what ends up on the calendar, like, it's really about events, so it's not about town council meetings on the calendar, but to your point, we are the arbiters of it, nothing goes live on the site with that, so if you had a poem and you submitted it on the Clinton crates or whatever part of it, we would look at it and determine whether it's appropriate or not. I think that would be a great problem to have if everyone started using it. I think, I'm not sure, I think if it was really controversial, I might throw it back to Carrie or to you guys and say, I got something here, I've never, I'm not sure, what is the input? We'd probably use our board first, and the board includes Christine and Alan from the opera and Kids Connection, Laura from Kids Connection, so we sort of have arts leaders in the town, but if it was really controversial, especially if it was somehow politically controversial or socially, I'd make, I would absolutely come to you guys first. Yeah, but, and I think that, you know, that could happen not only with poetry, it could be art, it could be, you know, controversial in some way. But, and that's part of the job of having a site like this that really promotes your town, you want it to be inclusive, but there's always that percentage that can make it, you know, complicated. But yes, we, not, it can't go live unless we look at it and Sarah basically looks at it, sees it and says, oh, we got this piece in, you know, and also where do we put it on the site, how do we market and promote it? But more importantly, if there's a poet that you know, if you guys know individual artists that want to post things, that's the point of that curtain creates, they can have a, they can have a space on this page, this is really for everyone, to promote, and the mission of the Arts Council is too, to promote the existing arts in the town and artists, and to help develop new, to develop and promote new arts and culture that helps the economic development of the town.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions? Nope.
Thanks for your time very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven, the Henry Carter Hall Library Architectural Design and Consulting Services Proposals, Mary Beth?
Hi. Last Thursday, Richie Santana, the board president, myself and Carl met with the representatives from QA and AM Architectural Firm, they were one of the six who proposed, who answered the RFQ for the library. Carl had worked with this particular firm before, and they had library experience, it didn't hurt that they were the low bidder, but we met for probably about an hour, they answered questions for us and presented, you know, what they thought would be the process going forward. So after they left, Richie and I sort of picked Carl's brain, and he agreed with us that this would probably be a good fit for us, they're Connecticut-based, they've got a project in Old Sable, they've got a project in Madison, it'd be accessible for us, they know libraries and they know the state construction grant process. So going forward, what he also suggested, and we agreed, that we would like to set up a time to have a, schedule a workshop with the town council, to just talk about how it would go forward and the scope of the project, and my suggestion would be if we could do it at the library, I don't know if that's accessible or acceptable for you folks, but that's where we are right now. So our board has agreed to come up with half of the fee, the fee was $28,000, and I see you've got a motion here, all written up for, and that's where his suggestion for that $14,000 from the town came from, was the leftover.
Any questions?
I just, I just had one thing for the town council, you know, I think, I think that's great, but when I looked at that motion, it's asking for the $14,000 to be transferred from the TERF project, and, you know, the TERF project hasn't started yet, and I know that Carl probably picked that because it's scheduled to be under budget, but who knows what's going to happen? And we have other ARPA funds out there, like we talked, Dennis, you mentioned the senior outreach, so I would propose that we move the $14,000 from somewhere else, like the senior outreach instead of the TERF project, because we might end up down the road doing another transfer, so that's what I...
Yeah, I had that concern myself when I read that.
Yeah.
I said, of all things, you picked the TERF thing.
Yeah.
That could be the first thing, you could go overboard.
Right.
So, I mean, if anything, you know, yeah, I mean, for the lack of what you just said, I have it in front of me, unfortunately, that senior outreach, we put $53,000 in it, well, I don't know, what is it, 18 months now? And there's not one penny out of it. I mean, if we were going to touch something else, I'd rather touch the bath house, because I understand the bath house might have a little problem, because now somebody wants to put permits and special, so that could be stalled, so I mean, yeah, anything but the TERF.
The TERF.
I agree, that, you know, the TERF is probably the last thing I would touch right now.
Is that the list of all this stuff?
Yeah, right here, sure.
I mean, if you're going to transfer, you'd probably want to transfer within whatever the park and rec is doing.
Right.
I mean, the bath house, I think, is an issue of the fact that they have to raise it now because of FEMA.
Right.
So it doesn't seem realistic that you're going to be raising a bath house four feet, apparently, is what they need to do, because then you have an issue with making it ADA compliant and everything else, so, I mean, if there was a project that they might have issue even doing, and they set aside, what, $300,000?
Right, yeah, I agree.
For them to move it.
What, so why do we have to stay in park and rec? Not that I care, I really don't care, I just think the TERF project is the least, the worst spot to go, but I just thought senior outreach, I think we're going to end up using that for something else, so that's what I would suggest.
Could we make a motion using the terms unused ARPA funds?
No.
So we have to designate a specific?
I would, yes.
Okay, so which will you choose?
I mean, I would use the bath house, because I don't know what that project's going to come.
Yeah, I mean...
Honestly, they got $300,000, I don't, I mean, it's a park and rec project, so then that way, at the end of the day, you don't know what the transfer is going to be anyways, I mean, if the turf field is fine and under budget like they expected, you have the money there anyways that they can move from bath, from turf field to boathouse if they needed it.
Right, yeah, that's a good idea. That's a great idea.
Chris, you want to make the motion there?
Make that motion.
Sure. The town council hereby agrees to fund a Henry Carter Hall Library study in the amount of $14,000 contingent upon the library board providing equal funding to hire an architect. The town council hereby approves a transfer of $14,000 from the American Recovery Plan Act funds designation for the bath house into a new line item designated as library study.
Okay, we have some information here, we should do two motions, one is to fund the project, and one is to do a line item transfer, so could you bring this off on the funding?
You got to withdraw that motion.
Okay, withdraw that motion, Sue.
Just read half of it.
Oh, just read the half. The town council hereby agrees to fund a Henry Carter Hall Library study in the amount of $14,000 contingent upon the library board providing equal funding to hire an architect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and the second motion?
The town council hereby approves a transfer of $14,000 from the American Recovery Plan Act funds designated for the bath house into a new line item designated as library study.
Second.
Any questions or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, so on to item number eight, which is a SAMHSA Strategic Prevention Framework Partnership for Success Grant, did everybody read that in their, in the, did you have that information about the SAMHSA grant? Okay, great, excellent. So Carl has signed a letter to the project director, Ben, and the human services, putting forward our approval, and is approving or is applying for the grant, so can someone make the motion that Carl has left us there?
I'll make a motion to, for the town council to authorize the directs in the submission of the SAMHSA Strategic Prevention Framework Partnership for Success Grant in the amount of $375,000 to continued financial support for the prevention efforts in the human services department.
Great, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, great. All right, great. The next is the landfill agreement contract, item number nine. And here, you've all seen the, um, contract and we're asked to both approve that contract and authorize Richard to sign it. Okay? Did you take a look at the contract?
Yep.
Richard had a question about whether the council had read it? And Mary told me that yes.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel had read it? Yeah, 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 that's right, that's what I meant, legal counsel, yeah.
Yeah.
All terms and conditions.
I did read it and I have a couple of questions. Uh, it says the project development at the end is $2,461,000. Who's paying that $2,461,000? Not the town?
No, not the town.
They're paying it?
That was, yeah, the whole point.
The company that we're hiring or that's going to do this project? That's what they're going to spend?
Yes.
Cause I see in there that we're going to get $665,000 for some kind of soil. They're going to pay us to, and we get $665,000 for $2 a ton or something, X amount of tons for soil. Then it says, you know, the whole project is going to cost $2,461,000. They're on the hook for the $2 million, I hope, and not us.
Yeah, from what I remember, Chris, do you remember, the cost to us was something phenomenally low, like 45,000?
Right, so we're getting that fee for the, the soil.
Right.
And then this is the estimate from the company that's going to do the capping.
Of what they're going to spend.
Correct.
Okay, so I just don't want to make sure.
Because this is the permitting and applications, that's what they would fill out. I mean, everything else here, that this is the project work that they estimated.
Okay.
So I'm assuming, as you are, that this is their cost to, to do that work on that, to cap, to fill the, you know, the landfill, to cap the landfill.
I remembered a $45,000 cost to us, which.
$45,000 cost to us?
Total, that's what I remember. Does anyone else remember that?
This addresses how LEA is doing, because in, in this, it's all LEA. If you read through the preparation, so it's all, this is what they're doing, this is their estimate of the cost for the work.
Okay.
And then our, obviously, amount that we would get per ton of soil placed in the landfill is part of the closure activities. Based on the amount required to construct the landfill, the permitted grades, 305 tons and anticipated, 610,000 will be paid to the town in host fees.
Right.
Other than that, there are no other fees associated with it.
Richard, you took a look at, look at the contract.
So when this is over.
Did, did, did legal counsel comment on anything or no? Did Carl?
No, he said that it was.
She said it was fine?
Yeah.
No, she was fine.
So when this is over, they'll proceed, spend all this money and do.
Yeah, that was the miracle.
And just fix it up.
It's right here, right.
Right? That's, that's all they're doing.
Right here.
That has nothing to do with the fact.
It's all preparation.
Yeah, okay, so that has nothing to do with putting soil around there or anything else like that. That's going to be a different contract.
Correct.
Where somebody's going to pay us a lease fee.
Correct.
To use that field.
If so.
Like other towns do.
Correct.
Okay. I just don't want to, you know, get caught for $2 million.
Yeah, no.
All right.
Okay, great. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the contract? We're going to make two motions, one to approve and one to ask Richard to sign it. Anyone want to make a motion to approve that contract?
No one seems to be too.
Oh, we can do it in one, okay.
Too overdue.
Since this is difficult, we'll approve it and, um.
Yep.
Get Richard to sign it in one motion. Anybody there?
Is it written out?
Yep, we're doing it. We're trying to do it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the contract and have.
Authorize Richard.
And authorize Richard to sign it.
Great, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, fine, um, number 10, the Financial Monthly Report. No one is here to present this, but we have it. And we have been told that if you have any questions, you can address them in an email to Richard. Okay?
Yeah, um, I know.
Because, because it's his first day.
I know Richard's not familiar with our past things. Someday I would love to get back to that beautiful page that breaks down the undesignated surplus and the contingency funds that Sue used to always print up every month.
Yeah, every time, yeah.
I know it's impossible at this point, because he's probably never even seen it. And, uh, we don't have a finance director, but hopefully.
That will happen again.
Me being sort of like watching that, "undesignated" for the last 25, 30 years, I'd like to, uh, you know, just see how that's progressing every month. And the last that I have here is the December one that was, you know, printed up. Maybe just some kind of, it don't even have to be that formal, but just give us an idea of, you know, what.
Where we stand.
I was ignoring, anybody take anything out?
Okay.
You know, something simple, if you can, if you could.
Okay, we'll see that happens. All right, so 11, um, item number 11 is the chairman's report. Um, obviously, we are putting just about everything we have into the budget. Tomorrow night, we'll be back for the school budget. And what isn't being put into the budget, we're concentrating on this search for the town manager. And we have our hands full and we continue to work forward. Um, and that is all I have. Council discussion. No. Chris? No council discussion. Okay, all right, great. Um, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Anybody?
I got nothing.
Yep.
Well, uh, last week's police commission, uh, things are going along pretty good. I guess, uh, their overtime budget is taking a little bit of a hit due to the fact, mostly because of the contracts.
Yes.
You know, the, the dispatchers' contracts, not really on the police side as much, but they'll, they'll try to do the best they can to, uh, get it back in line by, by July 1st. A couple of notes that I'd like to bring up to the public mainly is that, uh, there's an interesting report. All of 2023, we had three informal complaints against that police department. Three informal complaints. Two against the police and one against dispatch. They were handled internally by the chief. They did not result in any type of discipline or anything. I think it was more or less like somebody said they were a little rude when they talked to them, something along them lines. But I think that's outstanding. And this time of day, when police departments get knocked all across the country for, you know, not doing their job and everything, I think people in Clinton should be very proud of their police department and the fine job they do. Also, in same token, uh, just wanted to give out a, a little note of recognition. Recently, there was an episode where somebody jumped into Managua, Managua Tug River, ice cold, and, uh, Mike Neff, Tasso Klatos, Officer Lombardi, Officer Frye, and Sergeant Popovich jumped in and saved him and pulled him out of the ice cold water. I'm not particularly sure which one of the officers really got, what do you call that, their hypothermia and stuff like that and had to be, uh, you know, taken to the hospital because he was so cold. But again, just so I want to go on that TV camera there and tell the people out there just, you know, how lucky we are about how our police, every day, all you hear about is cops, don't do this, don't do that, don't do this. You hardly ever hear about how the cops and your fire people and your EMTs respond. So I wanted to throw that little note out there. I know the council knows it, you being part of fire department and EMT and Chris being up at the state and all. And, but, uh, for some of those people that like to go on the social media and just knock the police department or the fire department, or public works for that matter, uh, I for one stand very proud for all three of them. So that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, I'm going to report for Brian, who apologizes for not being here, but he's quite sick. Planning and zoning report, uh, there was a discussion of our request, the town council request to discuss design guidelines and light ordinance. The planning and zoning had decided to hold a Regulations Committee meeting to discuss this in more detail. And, uh, we've already talked about the River Cog. I'll report on Coastal Resiliency Task Force between Westbrook, Old Saybrook, Fenwick, and ourselves, where we have this $250,000 grant. We've been working on this for, uh, since, I guess, the late summer. And their report is going to be available by mid-May. By August, we'll be discussing two projects per town that they will recommend for each of us and then help us get grants for those projects. So that's where we are with that. And that's it, I guess? Okay? Uh, item number 14, executive session.